Welcome, everybody, to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Wednesday, November 8th, 2023. The time is 6:08 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Joe Chai.
Here.
Janet Charlton.
Janet did get ahold of us. She had other commitments tonight.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Mr. Ferguson also got ahold of us tonight, and he has some business to take care of. Both would be excused, too. But you have a quorum, Sledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Parsons, will you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Water system receivership. I just talked with the county manager today. He thought he was going to be able to have that agreement to us today, the draft agreement, but he's thinking it's probably going to be tomorrow. So probably get that out to everybody in advance so you can start taking a look at that as soon as we have it. Worden Park, our CO, local park maintenance grant. There was over 150 applicants for that grant. Vader was not selected for that grant, unfortunately. So we'll just have to try again later. The Halloween downtown event that happened the Saturday before Halloween, October 28th. There were dozens of kids down there. They had a lot of fun. It was a great event, so I'm hoping that we can see that going forward in the future as a new tradition. Park Board, they're going to be holding their Holiday Bizarre fundraiser and tree lighting ceremony on December 2nd. This will be their second annual event doing this. Vendors are still wanted for that. So you can contact City Hall if you have some vendors that may be interested in participating in that. And of course, tree lighting ceremony, public's invited, so definitely come out and check it.
Is that head dark then?
Yeah, I think it starts, I think they're expanding the hours, four or five o'clock?
The vendors, the vendors will start at two, and it'll go until seven o'clock, and the tree lighting will be at six o'clock with the raffle drawing to follow up. And we're working on Santa, and we're working on figuring out what.
Did you know it's going to get dark at four o'clock?
Yeah.
How's that vending going to work after dark?
It's inside, so we're renting the inside of the Silly of God hall right across the street. So is it into our holiday shopping?
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun. Last year, they had a little area set up for pictures, and there was a line of people trying to get pictures with Santa, and everyone was hanging out outside, having hot drinks, and looking at the lights. It was really good.
Were you Santa last?
I'm never Santa. Santa, Santa.
When's the decoration teardown party? Are we going to have one of those this year, or are we not going to have?
Hopefully, we don't have to tear down the way you went down last.
Okay. And are those people helping with this event this year?
We haven't heard anything back with that, other than they all said that they did do it, and we haven't gotten anything back from the county about if there's a fee that they're going to be having to pay, and we're supposed to expect that, or?
They should be. They're serving people.
It'd be really nice. We did put in our, we did write up a thing for testing that we would love community service, and I think a couple of our board members even said they would like an apology of a perfectly person, but a letter would be acceptable. Again, we haven't heard anything about the outcome of that, Joe.
Good. Sorry to bring up bad stuff.
No, it's all good.
All right, it's Christmas. Reminder about training. If elected officials, if you haven't yet done your online training, please get to that. And one more public hearing for the budget. It'll be November 22nd, which is our next council meeting on the budget. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? Nope. I'm moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any suggestions for changes.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda for the meeting on November 8th, 2023.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second one, Mr. Daley, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Minutes approval.
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for October 25th, 2023, as written.
Motion by Mr. Daley to approve the minutes from October 25th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second about Mr. Parsons' discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the first of November, 2023, at $146,435.46. The amended end of October, 2023, of $18,265.10. The amended total, October, 2023, $107,495.32.
Parsons has made a motion to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hall. Slow, Jason. Any discussion? The vouchers, see, I'm sure you've gone through the book already. They were elevated this year because of the, or excuse me, this month because of the street paving for chip seal projects. So there's a $95,000 charge in there for that, but of course, that was grant funded. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Here.
Good evening. The October law enforcement totals for the month of October, there were a total of 245 citizen contacts, total of 20 calls per service, five of which were when a deputy was dedicated to the city of Vader, 17 traffic stops resulting in one infraction, one criminal citation, and during the month, there was one felony arrest. Questions?
I got a question. Was that traffic violation, was it speeding, and was it on the highway, or was it on the city surface streets?
Most of it is on the highway. I know people talk about how fast people drive on the side streets, but I've personally never seen somebody actually speeding. Even if I drive the speed limit, I feel like I'm driving too fast.
Same here.
But again, the only people that, only infractions I've ever seen have actually been on the highway, because that's where people actually do go.
Coming down a hill.
Coming down the hill, exactly. You don't kind of come the other way that fast, but coming down the hill, so.
Yeah, thank you, Washington, absolutely. Easy as going through fire.
Exactly.
You had 17 stops and only one ticket?
Right.
Five more tickets.
Well, a lot of times, and.
So we know.
What's that? Okay, let's just say that in Vader, when there's not a lot of traffic, sometimes our, what we stop people for, the threshold gets lower and lower, where guess what? I might stop them for five over, but they're going to get a warning. When elsewhere, because you have a whole lot more traffic, where the people actually, where I don't, we would feel like we're being asked chippy, making the stop. We have a higher threshold than when we write. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're actually stopping more people than we probably wouldn't elsewhere, just because we don't have the traffic. So we're not going to write everybody, just because we make those additional stops, doesn't mean we're going to write at a lower threshold. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, because people cross that hill like they're on fire, and you go by our house, you know, 40, 50 miles an hour. It's, what, 35?
Right at your house. Yeah, right at your house.
Right at, yeah, right at our house. But, you know, it's not like.
That's where I slam on my brakes.
No, it's coming, right? You know? And, you know, there's kids on our streets, you know, so we think that we want to maybe stop that.
Again, if we see something that we can stop, but then we still have to make the judgment call based on how egregious was the fence? Was it, you know, three, four, or five miles an hour over, and it looks like they were trying to slow down at the time? Or was it, you know, they didn't care? I mean, you have to look at every situation independently, and of course, you do have to have a heart as well, so.
Oh, that blew it out of the water, didn't it?
Right.
I don't know, naming names or areas or places or anything about that, or about the registered motorcycles that go down, up and down the streets at like 50 miles an hour, hot rod in the middle of the day, sometimes night and night. That happens a lot around.
If we see them and catch them, that's unfortunately, as is frequent in a lot of places, they figure out when we're around. And people don't tend to do stuff intentionally right in front of us. I mean, we've had some drunks that do because they're too drunk to understand, but normally, people don't do that type of stuff when we're around, so.
But if it does, call them.
Yeah, exactly.
And are you guys?
They might be near, and they might.
You guys will be, when people over, we're looking at an ordinance today to lower the city's speed limits, citywide, so.
That's kind of why I was asking him that question, so we can get some.
Yeah, once something has been set in stone, passed, and we know that we can now, you know, we will enforce whatever the legal speed limits are, and again, those are set by you, so whatever they're set at, I'll make sure everybody knows, because I'm sure, hopefully, there'll be some education meeting, some signs or something, but also make sure everybody knows, you know, if there is a change. Just like I said, right now, it's literally, people look like they're going fast, and we look at the radar, it's like, no, they're still under the speed limit. It just, because it's such a narrow road.
Bumpy.
It looks like they're, you know, their appearances are going really fast when they're not.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good questions. Good answers. City business. First order of business, the public hearing, preliminary 2024 budget and revenue sourcing for levy setting. I don't have a script. Open this public hearing at 6:20 PM. Yes?
Give a brief summary and then open it up to the public.
This is for the preliminary 2024 budget and revenue sourcing for levy setting. This is an opportunity for the public to give their opinions on the budget as it stands so far and on any opinions or thoughts on the property tax levy. Janet.
I have to, oh, go ahead. You have to open it up to the.
I did. This public hearing is open.
Public testimony.
Public testimony.
Just went through another, didn't we?
Get the verbiage correct. All right, Cindy.
2023, the budget 632, and now it's 938, is that the number we're going to have?
Which one are you looking at?
It's the six.
The overview, okay.
What was the budget last year? How much have we gone up? What was the budget last? So I do not know what the budget was last year.
Talk about expenditures or budgets?
No, the whole budget, the whole budget. Next year, it's going to be 938 and 954.
Budget.
Right? The revenue and expenditure, yes, good. So what was the budget?
I think we get about 465 a year. Don't we, for the city? For our budget?
That surprised me that it was going to be almost.
I'm guessing.
I mean, yeah. Budget.
I will answer.
That's what I remember.
Okay. So the 2023 revenue is what you were wondering, part of what you were working for?
I'm guessing.
Excuse me. 2020, well.
Right? It's been what, nine, kind of thing?
Right, that's, and that's how the budget is balanced right now, is the revenue and the expenditures match in the 2024 estimate.
2023 is about the same, right?
So.
Two dollars.
Our revenue, our 2023 budget was 315 for revenue.
2023?
Our 2023 budget was 315 for revenue.
So I can expect, I would assume that our expenditures are going to be close to that.
Well, that would be what you would hope. And our 2023 budgeted expenditures. This says they were slightly higher at 324, but there are, this may not be taking into account some grant funds we had gotten, so there would have been an extra, like a revenue that we didn't anticipate originally in the year, that we got through the year, the grant we didn't necessarily anticipate, so.
We can assume right around a little over $300,000 as a budget for 23. So apparently, somebody wondered why we're close to $1 million for 24.
We are not close to $1 million for 24.
What are these numbers here?
Where are you looking?
Okay, this is Janet Michaels' packet, it says, revenue is 938.
Okay, I got you on right.
Expansion 954. That's not the budget?
Okay, so that includes, that includes the sewer funds as well. So I was talking about, I was talking about just the general fund.
Oh, okay.
The total general fund is 400.
So then it's only going up about 100, not 100, if you look at that, just as general.
Okay, so you're looking, okay. Sorry, I know the answer is if I know what you're looking. Okay, so if you're looking at those, and you're looking at all the funds, so this would be.
Even just the general.
Okay, just the general.
So that, it looks like it's just a little under 100,000.
So.
So, right? Do you have this one?
I do. How do you get it to where you see a $100,000 change in somewhere?
2024 revenue, 2024 expenditures, that's what these are here, revenue and expenditures for 23.
I'm sorry, my numbers that I gave you would have been incorrect. Those were.
So it's not bad, I mean, everything goes up.
Question? Okay. Let me rephrase my answer. I had originally told you 315 and things like that. I don't like those answers.
Well, that's just makes them up.
No.
Actually, my question is, Joe, how much more is our budget this year than what's last year? Maybe I phrased it, I phrased it wrong. Because 100,000 isn't a lot of money to go up for one year, when you consider butter, you know, $5 a pound.
Right, we're not anticipating spending $100,000 more than this year. So if you were to include. So our actual budget for the, for the general fund on revenue in 2023 was $549,000. But that includes transfers into, there'd be associated expenditures. So for instance, in the general fund, if you were to take from, if you look at the overview, there's the current street and parks, and they are all part of the general fund. If you take money from the current fund and put it into parks, there's an, it's, we're taking, there's an expenditure line item, say it was $40,000. We took 40,000 out of the current fund, and we put it into the parks fund. And so there would be an expenditure and a revenue line item all at the same time. But we didn't actually get any more money, right? It's just we're moving money from around inside funds.
It was a grant?
Yeah. No, it's not a grant.
No, but where'd you get the money?
From one fund to another. So say you had, so.
The sewer fund.
So say, no.
No, you can't do that.
That's its own.
That's the sewer fund.
So we started from another asylum, another.
Yeah, so we have, so you have, so you're just labeling, so you're just changing the label from current fund money to parks money. It's still our money. So we had the money to begin with, and we're just changing the label. And so there's a transfer and an expenditure line item within the budget, and then there's an associated revenue line item as well in the parks. So current gets deducted 40,000, parks gets, you know, incremented up by 40,000. And so when you look at the budget, you'll see, you'll look at it, and you go, wow, there's a $549,000 budget. Well, or in revenue, well, there's, it looks like that, but we're only, but there's really $40,000 less. And so when I try to read you a number, it becomes.
40,000 less than 549 would be 500.
Right. But then there's, but that's just one. There's other things in there, like in our 2023 budget, if you were to, if you were to have the budget in front of you, and look, there'd be things like $130,000 worth of street grant money. Well, that's a revenue, but we sent it someplace else, too, right? So we didn't get to keep that money, and so.
So if you deducted the grants, or the money out of there, it's around 300 and something.
Exactly. So if you, if you pull out things like the grants, if you get rid of the grants, and you get rid of all those transfers in and outs from like, from the current, or from the current to the parks and the street and things like that, and also if you were to remove. Guess that's it. Oh, and then things like building permit fees and things like that, things that, what if we had COVID again, and we had no building permits? Or something like that. If you were to strip all that out, our budget would be 315,000 in revenue.
Well, you have to count buildings, because you.
Eventually, yeah, eventually you do. And that's why, when you look at these numbers here in front of you on the overview, it does count all that stuff. And so, you know, it says 400,000 in, in revenue, but some of it's fake revenue. That sounds horrible to say, but.
Is there grants in that 400,000?
This year, no. There are no grants in the revenue this year, and so.
So it didn't really go up that much, that's what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't change very much. Probably had another one. That's why it's hard, sometimes it's hard to compare one year to another, because in one year, maybe you'll do a transfer, and the other year, you won't. So if you just look at the bottom line, revenue and expenditure, they might not line up. And so you've got to go through, and you've got to like manually strip some things out.
So what do you think is what the next year's possibly?
Yeah.
Take 40,000 up.
Probably. Yeah, these numbers are correct.
Okay.
That's why they're on there.
Well, there's not much of an increase considering everything's going up.
Yeah, our primary increases on, like current, current street and parks stuff, the biggest increases would be payroll, because we're going to throw through, you know, if there's a 3%, we'll have a 3% cost of living adjustment. And then some of our employees are, are moved, will probably, will be, assuming their performance is good, which is, spoiler alert.
All of them, or even?
Right, and so, and so we'll have two or three employees that'll probably move up a step, which is a 5% increase just for moving up a step. But some of our employees have maxed out the steps, and so they're only raised, because they've been here for so long, like John, so their only raise would be the 3% cost of living. So payroll's the biggest increase this year on the current street and parks fund side of things. That's not true. Insurance. Insurance is another big one. Well, the good thing about the insurance, the attorney rates are going up, but we can control that by not necessarily using the attorney so much. Yeah, the insurance, the city insurance is doubling roughly, so that's about, I think it was about, it's 20,000? Is that a good number, just to throw out there?
You have a little less than that, I think it's 20.
It's doubling?
Yeah, so the, so it was going up 10,000 on the sewer side and on the.
Is that because we got a new plant?
It's insurance everywhere. I mean, auto, personal auto insurance is going up, people's homeowners insurance is going up. It's the insurance industry wide is doing it.
Because they're possibly scheming. Apparently, they're scheming as well, I guess.
Well, and law enforcement, we're not quite there.
Right, and so that's the other big one, and I highlight those in the, in the letters, that it was the law enforcement and the insurance on the general fund side, and then on the sewer side, the biggest increases, again, the insurance and then the operations for the wastewater plant. We've had a full year now with the new, with the new plant, and it's costing us another $20,000 a year in electricity to run the thing. We've got another 10,000 or so in chemicals we have to buy every year, and so water's a little, we use more water down there than we did before, and so it costs considerably more to run the new wastewater plant. So those were the big increases on the sewer.
So with those two developments that are planned for next year, will that increase this budget? More revenue?
The revenue.
Is that included?
So for the sewer, obviously, the first, the, you know, it will start making adjustments right away with new connection fees. So our connection fee for a sewer account is $4,500. So for every home, there's a $4,500 sewer connection charge we'll have for revenue. And then when folks start paying their bills, once the new home is constructed, you know, they'll be paying the base rate plus any overage, and so that'll affect the bottom line, too, and so.
So you'll have a little bit more revenue?
Obviously, yeah. So in the, in the long term, between, we figure with 12 new homes and the associated increase with the rates that they're going to pay, you know, and we're probably, we're talking about a six, well, I'm, I've proposed a 6% increase to sewer rates. You probably saw that in your letter. Then we'll have a balanced budget for the sewer as well.
You have about 15 new ones.
Right, so that's conservative, so that was only one of the two, one of the two developments. So we didn't want to assume everything, just to be conservative. Yes, ma'am?
You raised the sewer rates already this last year.
Right, yeah, it was $5.
I want to know, speaking of the sewer, can our sewer plant handle all these new houses and developments?
The new sewer plant, when it was, when it was engineered, it was designed for twice the size of the city.
Okay, that was a concern of mine when we were talking about.
Yeah, they, just a bunch of years ago, when they came in and proposed that, they had, they did, the engineering company did an analysis, and they said, all right, this is going to have a 20- or a 30-year life cycle on the sewer plant, and they had these population projections, and it was, the city is going to be over 1,000 people and all this stuff, and so, and we all laughed at it. Well, I'm glad it's there, because it happened.
On that topic, because of the new rates, you said the budget is now balanced on the sewer fund, and it's showing basically a $5,000 increase in retained earnings from the sewer fund. So what would, what's your basis on raising the rates again, then if you're going to retain an extra $5,000 over this next year above the expenditures, why need more money? Then if you're gonna retain an extra five thousand dollars over this next year above the expenditures, why need more money?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Because on the overview, it says we have, we have five, because the uh.
They're running nearly five hundred seven thousand years. So retain earnings, five thou- five thousand for the years. Then you're asking crazy rates.
Okay, well, so first, first the sewer fund operates um, independently. And so money from general fund doesn't pass through to sewer fund unless council authorizes it. And it certainly doesn't go vice versa from the sewer fund into um, into the general fund. And so really, if you were to look at this, it's just the, the bottom number, that fourteen twenty two. That's, that's the overage. With the way the, the budget is set up right now, this, the budget is balanced with the fact that we're getting new homes. And so the, the forty five hundred dollar connection fee times twelve homes is, is what balances the budget. And so.
Projecting.
And so, correct. And so without, if we were to get zero, we would be running in a deficit, which is not good. Which is why, in the long run, we need to have an, an increase in the homes and to get the balance, the. The budget to balance without any new homes within a couple of years.
So if you're saying that your, your estimated budget for twenty twenty four is including an income that you don't know you're gonna get or not?
That's correct. But you, you always need to, in your budget, you always have to put money in that you think you're gonna get. Like if you were gonna get, if you wanted to have a grant, you should put that in there too. Um, and we have to, we have to estimate for. Um, connections, because if we, what if we got money and then it wasn't in the budget? But if, we'd have to do a budget amendment anyway to add it in. And so.
Well, you don't do a budget amendment anytime, anytime.
So it was, it was anticipated that the new sewer plant was gonna cost more to run. Um, and it does. I mean, it's, we've got over thirty thousand dollars in annual expenses just in. Chemicals and electricity to run it. And the current sewer rates were only. Pretty much just enough to keep the plant, the old plant running. And so we need to increase the rates to match the current equipment that we have. It's unfortunate, but.
It's a lot less, sorry to jump in, but it's a lot less than we had planned on having to raise the sewer bills. Before we got all the grants.
Originally, when they were planning the, the plant, we thought we may have at least a three million dollar loan. To, after construction. And so we were gonna have to pay for all these extra operations costs. That we're talking about now that we're trying to balance the budget for, plus.
Plus a loan.
Pay for a three million dollar loan, which didn't happen. We had grants to cover the entire thing. And so. Um, we still, we still have low rates compared to our neighbors. And so, you know, we'd rather not raise rates where we live here too. Um, but that's what we have to do. And a six percent raise is about, is about five dollars a month. It's not nothing, but it's also not a lot either.
I have just a general question. The insurance that you guys, you guys covered the parks as well. So if I had an event down there or. Like the school they're having down there tomorrow at the park, whatever it is, the little kids doing something.
Whatever kids do.
Well, it's some kind of school. You see that, that.
The nature school.
Not one park is down in the country that babies have that, out your school.
There's a nature school.
Yeah, so that's covered by the insurance.
Yeah, yeah, our, yeah, the insurance policy and it's, it was over thirty thousand, wasn't it? Total for the year. The city pays. So the Association of Washington Cities has an insurance branch, RMSA. And um, and so we pay, pay that rate and it covers us for everything from, you know, if. The city truck gets smashed by, in an accident, or if one of our employees get hurt, or if someone falls off the sidewalk. That's, city hall burns down.
Tree falls on somebody at park.
So it's, it's, it's the city's insurance policy. So it's a lot, but then again, it's covering a whole city and everything that happens in it, so not too bad.
Is that the insurance you guys are talking about?
Yeah, the city insurance policy, yeah.
The, the other question I had on the insurance is the employee's insurance. I heard this required by the state care.
So there, so if you look in the expenditures, um, besides the salaries for employees. All the benefits are in there if they're eligible and if they, if they ask for them. And so benefits are separate from that particular. Insurance policy. Insurance policy is for liability. Um, it's not everyone's health insurance and things like that. That's separate.
Yeah, that's, well, that was my question, was the, the health insurance and stuff that, and the expenditures, I would imagine is what is under.
Yeah, it's in there. The retirement's in there, the uh, medical's in there.
Does all require by the state? This seems like it's pretty high. I just have experience with personal business like you does. And required operate, but you're not required to pay.
So we pay, so and we pay. A, a portion of like health, the healthcare, so it's like a match where the employer, the city pays a portion, and the employee pays a portion. And so. There's a little, I don't, I don't have the, I don't have it memorized. Lisa, do you have it memorized? Like, for the health insurance, like Vader's portion versus the employee's portion?
He has fifty fifty, fifty to fifty match. That's only for the whole employees though, unless they only have two local employees and only one.
It just seems like excessive amount to me.
Which, which part? Is everything?
Well, I would have to take it out, exactly. I just, it was glanced over because. I was too busy looking at the other numbers and it didn't seem right, but. This is my, my thought on it. I didn't circle that one, but I'm sure it's in this last one, it's a few. Kind of like, I could, I would have to try to find it exactly, but like the phone expenditures. Man, you guys spend a lot of money on telephones. Holy cow.
Yeah, so the, so, right there with you. Um, yeah, the CenturyLink phone bill is quite high. It's like twenty eight hundred a year or two thousand a year. That includes all our internet. It, it includes multiple lines. It's a, it's a, it's a business.
Right, well, then expenditures though, it seems like it's repeated multiple times. I just want to say if you're talking, it's only twenty eight hundred dollars expended. In the expenditures, kind of a couple minutes period.
That was one of the questions.
And also sewer, like sewer.
Yeah, when you look at your budget.
The expenditures for the um, for certain expenditures, like for our internet and our phone. It is, it's split fifty fifty. That's why you're gonna see it two times, is because that's.
The way it's written in here, it looks like you guys are proud of the bills, because it's like, this is this and this and this. And then it does it, it repeats it again and again and again and again. And it's like, okay, how many times are you gonna put this stuff in here?
What we're talking about. It just looks, because it looks like it's put in there.
I mean, it's, it's defined as sewer and defined as current. It isn't saying the same thing twice.
So, year to date, this was as of last month. Um, our phone bills were twenty one hundred for the general fund and. Come on, search work. Twenty one hundred on sewer and twenty one hundred on, on the general fund. Split in half, forty two hundred. So, yeah, there's multiple lines here, there's multiple lines here. Um, it includes the, the business lines, it includes. The um, the internet service. They have a, a higher, there's a higher speed internet service here than. Than what most folks have. And then also, and that, that price also includes the new sewer plant, which has. I think they've got at least two lines down there um, for remote access, internet and all that down there, so that our operator can. Log in from home and adjust chlorine dos- dosings and things like that. So, it's. I'm hoping that when, as far as phone goes, I know it's a small, a small drop really in, in the whole budget, but um. Next year, hopefully, we'll have the new fiber optic internet service through Lewis County P U D.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And so we'll look at, we'll, we'll look at the cost on that and see if it's.
CenturyLink is terrible. It's the worst I've ever seen. I mean DSL is better. I'm telling.
As far as the, the budget in general, when you're, when you're looking through it and you're like, wow, this is, this is kind of a crazy looking document. That, that prints, that what you're holding prints directly from a software called Vision, which is a municipal government budgeting system. It's the same one that, there, there's multiple ones out there, but um, it's one that's extremely popular. Our neighboring cities use the same one. If you were to look at their budgets, it's the same document. You'll see. Uh, all those account numbers on the side, those are VARs numbers. Those are the same numbers that you'll see whether you're in Vader. In Shaleus and Toledo, those are, those are predefined numbers. Um, and so if you go down and you look that number up. In another city, um, it'll be for notary costs, it'll be for attorney's fees, it'll be the same one. And so that's, this is just government accounting is what you're looking at. Um, and it's. It does take a little bit to get your mind around the way that prints out.
So talking about the sewer. Did the water district decide no or yes on shedding the water off so that we can collect sewer bills?
We don't have the, the draft agreement yet, but I have, I, the last thing I heard was, it was gonna be a. Their attorneys didn't like the idea. And I've tasked our attorney with trying to find an alternative. Because their attorneys said that they were open to that, if we could prove to them that it was.
To our attorney showing them how to do their job?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they wanted our attorney, want to put it that way. Yes, they were, they, they didn't want to do the legwork and they wanted us to do the legwork.
So we should be able to start turning water off for sewer bills?
I, I would expect that it should be able to be done. That's my, we, but it's a.
Just how much is that right now?
Uh, thirty thousand in back, back sewer bills, Kristen?
Yeah, I can write your.
I think that's close enough.
I would see that water. Oh, you had to try and work on trying to get the water control back. I'll see that. That was my next question. If you had to do that, how would you have the manpower be controlling the water in here when? If a vein breaks and you're in control, and you don't have the wire, the water in here?
Yep, that's really good. So um, similar to the wastewater plant, the water would be a self-operating utility. It would have to, it would have its own certified operators. Um, part of the city getting the wa- the water back is to have. Like a business plan, and a water man, water man, management, utility management plan. And so we'd have to have all of those things in place. So we'd have to have, either if we didn't have our, if we didn't have our own employees that could handle that immediately. We'd have to have on-call agreements with um, large plumbing firms that would come in and take care of that stuff right away. So just like when a line breaks and um, you know, the water, our water operator here in town right now calls. Um, public works from Lewis County, um, our water, our city, city employee, that would be our water operator, would call. You know, a large plumbing firm, DJ's Plumbing, or some other large one that would come down with excavators immediately, just like county does, and then take care of it. And of course, the city would have a bill for that, but that's all worked into the budget. County works that into their budget too. You know, they're not, they're not bringing down their public works, people with excavators for nothing and then not charging the uh. The water system for it, so.
You notice that the fire is, the department is not on this.
Correct. It's like, it's like another city. We're totally unrelated. Yeah.
President, why you guys, this is the council that brought the, the tax to getting voted on for this fire though? Isn't that what, wasn't?
We didn't vote on that.
So how could, how did that even get brought upon the, the ballot last?
The fire district is its, the fire district is its own entity. It's unrelated to the city in any way. They have their own representation. Own people that you vote for into there that make those decisions. I, I got involved just as a member of the public. Um, because I thought it was a worthwhile endeavor. And so I just was volunteering my services to help them out. It didn't have anything to do with.
If, if they didn't include the fire, nothing, their insurance would go flat out.
That's not true.
That's a separate discussion. We're not talking about the fire.
Has to do with whether you have a mortgage or not, uh, what your credit rating is, where you live. It is, and what insurance company you have. There's a number of things involved in that. It's not just fire.
What?
We, we can chat about that tomorrow if you like.
Yep, okay.
Alright, so, you know, we're talking about the budget. I don't know, I don't, I know I didn't, I don't know if I gave you a decent answer.
You're still funding, I didn't see it, but you're still funding May Day or helping with May Day and Fourth of July?
Yeah, there's special, there's a special event um, fund. And then from that, you know, we can authorize. Helping with insurances and Fourth of July. Just still in the public hearing. It's been a while. Any other comments? There's gonna be another um, public hearing on the twenty second. For more folks to voice their opinion. Any other testimony?
Question about something. And I'm not, I don't mean to offend anybody here, but my question is, why does Vader insist on requiring stuff? That's going to cost the town money and not make any revenue or profit, such as the corner across from the post office. Or the park, I know you got grants and stuff to pay for that, but then, then you annex the county park over here. And now it's our responsibility, including the road that goes to it. I mean, I just don't understand why. The city keeps getting all this stuff that costs money when they don't have any money. It just makes no sense.
So the, 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 the small vacant parcel across from the post office, yeah, we did, we, the city did purchase that. Um, all cities got. Um, COVID relief funds. And so it was basically grant money that we used to purchase that small lot. The intent is to eventually turn it into like a small, um, like a, a small pocket park, like a plaza, a place to sit and. Eat and things like that. We're gonna use it this year for um, a, a place for Christmas decorations that are gonna be going up soon. And so um, it's a small, very small park property that we're pers- preserving in the center of town. Warden Park, um, the playgrounds and whatnot, that was three quarters grant funded, one quarter is city funded. Um, that was money that the city had set aside for many, 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 many years for matching funds um, to do that. So we found that to be, yes, Kristen?
With Warden Park, we've brought in ten more rentals this year than we did in previous years, which is an intent of the city.
You're renting parts of the park out or something?
There is that. And so, yeah, so there was, there was some city funds, but it was held, held reserved for a lot of years for, for grant matching to make that park happen. Um, which has seen incredible amounts of use. So I think it was a worthwhile endeavor. What is, oh, McMurphy Park, you were talking about annexing in. So currently, right now. About one third of McMurphy Park is in the city limits, and two thirds of the park is in the county, the way it's set up. So the lower half towards the creek is in the county. And so we have um, some residents that live on the outskirts of town. Um, that wanted to annex into the city. Um, and so as part of that project. Um, it's no more work to annex in parts of city property, um, as well, fully into the city limits. Because we're already doing all the public hearings and all the planner work and everything. And so we included in. The ex, the section of McMurphy that wasn't in the city limits to bring our whole park into the city limits. And then also a couple other, other small park properties um, on the south side of town too. Um, all is the same project.
City didn't buy that land, by the way. That was a gift from, you know, they didn't buy that land.
City didn't buy that land, by the way. That was a gift from, you know, they didn't buy that land.
Oh, yeah, that's been.
I mean, it costs money to maintain this stuff. And that's why I asked why we keep getting things that we have to put money out in.
Oh, it's not good to have McMurphy in, fully in the city limits versus in the county doesn't, isn't gonna affect, it's still our, it's still our property. We still, our, our public works people are still mowing the lawn and everything. Yeah. Um, one of the good things about it is if, um, if it's fully in the city, if we go to, to do something like projects such as putting some nice bathrooms in at McMurphy Park for folks, um, we would probably do that on down, down below, closer to the creek. That would have been the county's jurisdiction. So we would have, we would have had to go through building permit process through county to do that. If we annex it in, then we can control that ourselves and do our own permitting. So, just kinda made sense.
Thank you for answering my question.
Any other budget questions right now? Public testimony? Ask again, any more testimony from the public? Right, this public hearing is closed at six fifty eight P V M. Is that enough, Lisa? Okay. Going to item number one, council to discuss, the, the discussion continues regarding the draft of budget. We kinda did that already. Council members have anything else to discuss right now on the budget? No decisions have to be made right now. Before you, you should have, um, obviously the, the mayor letter as well as, um, a version of the budget that, uh, was worked up that has, um, historical figures all the way back to twenty seventeen. So I included those in there so you could see things like our property tax revenues for the last five years. And everything else the last five years. So it'd be interesting for you to see how things have or haven't changed. So, um, also included tonight is, what did I pronounce for myself and what does, alright, so everyone has the, um, potential levy documents. That one's fine, isn't it?
Yeah.
Some key takes, so the, the levy document received from the county on the legal paper, those numbers are utilized to create this form. So a lot of the Vader, the, the Vader numbers that are on there are on the potential tax levy paper. What's a, a good takeaway from, from the legal one though, is that you can compare Vader to, um, all of the other cities in the county. And you can see things like how much, how much our total city is worth. That sounds bad, but for instance, um, if you were to add up all of the first, real and personal property in town, it comes out to seventy-two and a half million dollars. And then from, so that's Vader's, Vader's worth. And you can compare that to Toledo and P L and Napvai and Winlock and so on and so forth. It shows our current, uh, property tax levy amount, which is eighty-two thousand sixty-six dollars and twelve cents a year. Uh, that's how much property tax we collect. And it shows our maximum allowed levy amount, um, which would be ninety-seven thousand and seventy-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. So if the city were to choose to use all of its capacity, bank capacity for levy, it would increase property taxes total across the entire city by fifteen thousand dollars, uh, divided out amongst all the rate payers, depending on your house value. So that would be the most. If you also, or this one, you have to flip it. Oh, no, you can see it on the front page. You also compare Vader to other cities and that, you can see that Vader has eighteen point two nine percent of bank capacity versus Toledo at two percent. That's because Toledo, you know, raised their property taxes. They, they raise it to the maximum every year. And so that two percent is their increase for one year. P L does the same thing. They don't have bank, they're, they'll use all their bank capacity this year. Napavine is the same way. Mossy Rock is the same way. And so Vader's unusual in that it has, um, bank capacity from previous years in additional to, in addition to the, the allowance that we get. So the city can raise its property, can, can increase over the previous year's high levy amount by one percent. And so our highest levy amount currently allowed is ninety-seven thousand dollars. And so this year we get an addition, additional nine hundred and seventy dollars that we can increase. But nine or seventy dollars this year plus all of the other years that we didn't increase. Which is why our bank capacity is so much higher than everyone else's. Am I drawing on? Anyway, um, it's a fun form. I really enjoy it. Um, and so hopefully you can use that one and the, um, potential levy form. It has some examples of different house valuations and different percentages if the city council were to choose to raise property taxes. Um, what that would equal out to be, um, for an individual home. For instance, a five percent, um, a five percent use of our bank capacity on a three hundred thousand dollar home would come out to be about sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Wait, that's per year. So sixteen ninety-five a year. So, um, again, it's not much. It's only a dollar change. In, in, in the, in the bu, the current budget, um, I did not include any property tax increase.
Like this is, it's roughly ten thousand a year.
So I was in, so when we wrote that letter last week, we didn't yet have these numbers from the county. Um, I thought we had ten thousand dollars for the bank capacity. We have fifteen thousand dollars in bank capacity.
And that would be how much would be in the property tax?
If, for the full fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
It would be on a three hundred thousand dollar house. I use three hundred thousand just because it's kind of the, the going rate right now unless you live on the hill and you've got a big, big farmhouse.
Mine is not worth anything. It's really.
Had a pick on you. Pick on me. Uh, sixty-two dollars a year.
For taxes?
If it were, if, if we were to use the entire bank capacity, it would be sixty-two dollars a year.
Should be thirty-one dollars in the first half of the year and thirty-two dollars for the second half of the year.
But if you break it out by month. Five dollars and seventeen cents.
City to look at what the county assessor is doing on property that may be not assessed to the value that they should be assessed at, that they're just overseeing it. They could be getting a lot more income versus what they're getting now because they're charging them for light blocks for the house.
Uh, we don't have, we don't have any say in what, in what the assessor does. We have, the city would have, it would be individuals that would petition the county, just like any other public comment period, you know, so it wouldn't be. They don't ask us. Does that, does, does that?
Hey, can I bring that up to them?
I mean, I could talk to, we all could, you know, we all have a county commissioner. Mr. Scott Brummer is our commissioner. He's our representative up there. You know, we could talk, he's very receptive to meetings. We could talk, you could talk with him. I know, wasn't there an article in the paper about a thousand residents in the county contested their assessed value this year?
Oh, yeah.
Something like that.
Well, they're showing the, the residents is saying that they're paying more, their value is higher than they paid for the house on the bus. But we go through the city, our values, like, tenth of the value is, it's horribly paid for.
They're just paying for the land that they own.
It just takes a minute to look through the county website. I see a couple of destruction sites and they're just paying on the pointy hand. They're not paying for the assessed value at all.
And I think it had to do with COVID because some of the stuff we saw was put there during the end of COVID. And I doubt that the assessor came out and assessed anything after it was finished. You know, so that's probably why it's been overlooked. We just.
This seems unfair.
It isn't fair, you know?
I did a house remodel during COVID and they were right on assessing it up. Yeah.
Oh, man. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for me too.
So that should, I mean, that's the explanation of the documents. I mean, it's pretty much everything, um, between now and the end of the year that we'll have. There's nothing else that we're waiting on right now. Hopefully at the next council meeting, what we'll have, we'll have, we'll have the budget, um, update a little bit more with, um, kinda where we are currently with our balances and go through and pay our bills for the rest of the year. So that'll tweak the end of year balances in that overview. Are there questions or you just want me to stop?
As of right now, there's zero increase in our budget.
That's correct. But in the bu, in the sewer budget, it does have a six percent estimated rate increase. But it doesn't need to be there if council, so chooses. Any other discussion on this, dead horse? Alright, moving on to item number two, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, setting citywide speed limit. Doesn't exist yet. So I was hoping that the attorney would, uh, have that for you, um, today, but, um, it wasn't ready. Since we want, it does require an ordinance since we are gonna change the speed limit from the state, uh, default of twenty-five within a city down to twenty, if we want to change our citywide. So I was hoping it would be done today. It wasn't done today. Um, so hopefully we'll have that at the next council meeting.
Twenty? We should do sixteen and a half. I, you could write on a half, a half a mile over.
One of the things I've been doing in my free time is researching street signs.
So you haven't done it?
And the way to do, to announce like a citywide speed limit on the same sign. And, um, I've seen a lot of those fractional speed limits. So you probably have seen those as well.
I have not.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Just garbage out of my brain.
Like eight and a half, like in a retirement community. Where I saw one, there was one that was, um, was in a Jewish, like a Jewish settlement of some kind. And it was, the number had a significance to the Jewish religion.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the speed limit was. It was like.
Well, I know that you.
Eighteen point nine or something.
I know that if you wanna make a appointment time, you make it like, hey, I'll meet you at twelve thirteen tomorrow. And it makes them, it makes the person evaluate, oh, twelve thirteen, so this is really important.
Mind games.
Yes, it is. So if we did do nineteen and a half miles per hour, everybody would be like, nineteen and a half miles? Man, they take it serious here in town.
I don't, I don't.
Then we have the whole sheriff's.
I, I think it's, I think it's a, it's not enough of a problem to try to change everyone's speed in town that five miles an hour. I don't think it's, I'm, I'm, I'm like most of us when we drive in twenty-five miles an hour down Eighth Street down to get down here, it's fast. It's too fast. And I don't see too many people. I know on the streets, like my street is wide and very smooth, but we have stop signs every block to slow people down. So I don't see people really going over the speed limit. He's not, they're not pulling people over for, on the side, side streets.
And I agree with that, that also, but on the other hand, there is, you need a swivel chair. You can keep your back to me. That's fine. Um, there's, also gives law enforcement more bite, I guess you would say, if for those one or two, ten people in town that actually do fly down the road. So if he.
So you're saying that threshold he's talking about, you want to be at twenty-six miles per hour instead of thirty-one? You know what I mean? Because they're gonna pull you over for going over five miles an hour over the speed limit. And at twenty, you'd be twenty-five?
Yeah, it just gives it a little bit more to, because we're not doing it anyway. Most of the people in town are doing over twenty-five miles an hour. I mean, I do ten down Tenth Street because it's a driveway. And, but there are people that will do twenty-five, thirty plus down Tenth Street. And it's just ridiculous. And if, if they are doing twenty-five down Tenth Street per se, or up Alpine Court, there's, there's no reason for law enforcement not to be able to say, hey, this is ridiculous. Because yeah, you're going the speed limit right now, but that speed limit is ridiculous and none of us do it anyway. So if we lower it, if I, if we even lowered it to fifteen on the city streets, I don't think it would matter to most of the people here.
I think Mr. Ferguson might disagree with you.
Mr. Ferguson doesn't drive that fast down the street either. At least down Tenth Street he doesn't. So, but.
Yeah.
To me, it's just, uh, it's, it's not going to affect the people that have common sense. It's just gonna give a bigger ticket to the idiots.
I'm also looking at, um, actually, I've never looked for all of our twenty-five mile an hour stop signs. I, I think I found one. There's only one, one stop sign, or excuse me, speed limit sign. Um, and it's on, on Eighth over here when you come off West Side Highway. There's a twenty-five mile an hour sign.
I kinda thought there used to be one on Sixth Street for some reason.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a ten mile an hour one that a resident stuck up over here on, uh, at the end of Eighth over here. But, um, anyway, um, I think proper signage, I think if we have a handful of twenty mile an hour signs or anything as well, to let folks know that it, that the city limits are lower, that enhances visibility. It'll be nice. It'll be nice for everybody.
If you don't have any police to enforce obvious laws, then it's redundant anyway.
Other discussion on this from the council? Alright, public comment? Yeah, 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 Cindy. Cindy Radcliffe?
I'm speaking on behalf of my husband who is becoming militant. The city of Vader, uh, and not because of me. The city of Vader has an ordinance that says that Jake breaks and all out of town. I think they call it something else, uh, compression brakes.
Isn't there a sign still right by your house?
No.
Says that? Oh.
No. Uh, so there used to be a sign right by our, right by our field and it's gone. And those people who, um, come right by our house, those logging trucks, for some reason, it doesn't wake me up, but it wakes him up and he feels the need to share with the rest of the household. So we all get woke up. But he's had it with it. And so if you could put that sign back up, that'd be great. He would be very happy. Not that he would shoot anybody, but he has mentioned it. So there's a couple of trucks that are really loud. You guys can probably hear it over by your house. That the, when they hit those Jake brakes, they just, they thud all the way down that hill.
That'd take that over the train any night.
Yeah, me too.
That, that's what five of us said, right?
No, I mean, I'll take the train.
And it's, we used to have a sign that said, in city limits, you're not allowed to have those, use those brakes. So if you could put that sign back up, he would.
I think it's the state that must have took that sign down. It's a state sign, state highway, so.
Yeah, but it was our sign because it actually used to have a ordinance number on it. It used to have, yeah. He was quite upset that he couldn't find it. So.
Okay, noted it.
Alright, so noted it.
Any other members of the public? Remember, members of the council? Comment? His name is adjourned at seven seventeen.
What would happen to that?